We have the invitation, please all rise.
Good evening. War, rumors of war, hurricane season, outstanding hurricane recovery work, tourist season, impending holidays. Life is surely full down here, Lord, and it's easy to get overwhelmed, especially considering the level of responsibilities and decisions these city leaders and staff deal with. Show them clearly what are the optimum decisions to benefit our community, especially as it relates to our area's housing crisis. Connect them with resources and strategies needed to streamline operations and foster economic growth within our community. Give them rest while expanding their time, which is only something you can do. We pray for peace for all war-torn areas in the world, as well as protection for our community and our nation. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. We have a pledge allegiance on three, one, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, we're ready to get started here. We have an agenda. Anybody have a problem with the agenda as it's written? All right, move along. Mayor is welcome, I'm glad to see you all here. We need your help, we need your advice. We need to know what you want us to do for you. We work for you, so please, don't be shy. Public comment on anything on the agenda. Anybody public comment? Moving along, then we have Chris Corey has a presentation for to give us. I'll come stand with him and with Laura, I mean with the city manager also. No?
Is this on? Yeah. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to give this proclamation recognizing my own Rotary Club in Benita Springs and all the great people that are in it. The proclamation says, whereas forty-five years ago, a group of community-minded men and women shared a vision for a Benita Springs-based Rotary Club dedicated to addressing the specific needs of our community and to improving the lives of local children and families. That vision became reality on November 3rd, 1978, which for an old guy like me is hard to believe that that's forty-five years ago, when the Rotary Club of Benita Springs received its charter from Rotary International. Whereas for forty-five years, the Rotary Club of Benita Springs has been comprised of leaders of our community who came together in fellowship to exchange ideas and share their expertise from multiple professional backgrounds, including corporate, small business, banking, and finance, nonprofit, education, and government. Whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" has inspired members of the Rotary Club of Benita Springs, currently seventy-five strong, and they are active, to actively work to bring forth positive change locally and globally through programs and projects that include sponsoring students' clubs, awarding college scholarships, supplying books to schools and dictionaries to elementary students, and provide funding for food pantries, hurricane relief, veteran services, and wheelchair and heart surgery programs. And whereas last year, the Rotary Club of Benita Springs awarded more than $147,000 in grants to local ed- organizations with funds raised through the generosity of residents and visitors at annual fundraising events, including the popular Lover's Key Nautical Boat and Seafood Festival and the widely anticipated Christmas Tree and Poinsetta Sale. Now therefore be it proclaimed that our mayor, Rick Steinmeier, on behalf of the city council does hereby recognize and thank the Rotary Club of Benita Springs and its members, past and present, for the role they have played for forty-five years in building a healthier, stronger community, and wish them the very best for many more years of devoted service to the people of Benita Springs. And I should have asked Jim and Joe and others who are with Rotary if they'll come up and accept this proclamation. Thank you very much, Ruth, Jim, Joe, for all your work and leadership in our community. And it's a very special recognition for those of you that may be interested, we're having our forty-fifth anniversary get-together at the Performing Arts Center, the Benita Center for the Arts, Friday evening, where a good time will be held by all. Would you care to say anything, Jim?
No, we totally appreciate this and we work hard every year trying to support the community and giving back. And we've been doing it for forty-five years and I won't be around in forty-five years, but hopefully the club will be as well, giving back.
Joe, you have anything to say?
I, one thing, I walked in the room and I noticed half the room was filled with Rotarians, so our presence is felt in Benita Springs all the time. So I'm just thankful for the city for supporting us.
Ruth, you want to say?
I'm a fairly new member, but it's been a privilege to be a member for two years now, so, yes. And I notice so many Rotarians here.
Okay. Mayor, you want to say something?
I appreciate their effort and I'm glad Chris rode all this. He's got a better speech than I do. I'm just straightforward and honest and I get in trouble that way. Thanks, Chris, and thanks, Rotary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you guys want to take a picture?
Do what?
A picture? Sure.
I sent that to all, including Derek, of course.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a point of order, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. We've got just a little less than a year to go with this council to the election. I want to put everybody on notice that we've got to stop having meetings like the one that we had last week and part of what we had in the workshop. Mr. Mayor, a lot of times you're rude and crude to people and you can't do that because we're all created equal here. You're the mayor, so we've got to get off that. We can't be telling people to shut up and this and that because that makes them mad and then they come back at you and that makes you mad and it goes back and forth. Last meeting, Jesse had a green sheet on the Banyan Tree lot. You took the green sheet away from him and presented it and made a motion before he got to, the way it's supposed to be, he's supposed to be able to present his green sheet. So, and this has gone on a long, long time, actually since first meeting of the, so we've got to come up with being better at being cordial and polite to our comrades, colleagues. We may disagree, but we don't have to be rude and crude. And then the other thing is, we're not allowed to ask questions of the public comment. You do.
Yeah.
We're not allowed to, you're not supposed to interrupt me. You're not allowed to make applause the audience, but if they say something that you like, then you applaud them. But you're saying they can't, but you can. We can't. If we have a presentation in here, the way it's supposed to be is the presentation finishes, then we all get to ask questions. But you ask questions through the presentation, but if I want to ask one or anybody else, it's not permitted. So I'm, all I'm going to say is, if we keep doing this, I'll bring it up at every meeting because we got to, we got to get this under control because it doesn't do you a lot of good, it doesn't do the council good. It's just something we need to get under control.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We all need to speak one at a time.
I agree with you.
Okay.
That's the problem.
Now you came back after you were done talking and you wanted to come again and I said, we'll get back to you. Okay. Now I know I get interrupted by some council people every meeting for the last three years and I know I'm a little short and shut up is a short way of saying, please behave yourself. Okay, now that's probably wrong, but I'm the mayor and I'm supposed to run this meeting. And I appreciate, I know I had a bad meeting. I had made arrangements for Fred Forbes to read the proclamation last meeting, which he turned around and had the city clerk read it. That was a complete surprise. I asked him to do that because he's involved with the League of City Managers. And one point number one. Point number two, number one, on the three proposals for the Banyan Tree Park, number one has a fence around it. Number two, and number one, I'll show you, if you don't agree with me, I'll show you the picture of the fence all the way around it, okay? All right? Number, and the second problem with that, it said no extra parking that we just put a million dollars worth of parking in. So that's why I had a problem with number one, okay? Number one is the only one that removes the sheriff's substation. And that's what you all wanted, to get the sheriff, the sheriff off that property, the way I look at it. So that was a problem for me to vote, I voted for it. The next city council meeting, we're coming up with, Arlene's working on a green sheet to address that substation and the lot, and the old library and what we're doing with the sheriff, we're gonna, you know, and the Dixie Moon, this has been going on for three years and nothing's happening. So that's coming up in the next meeting, not tonight, but in the next meeting. And I apologize for being so upset last meeting. I know I was bad and I could get a new, I don't know if I'd get a new deputy mayor or not, but thank you, Fred. I really appreciate it. Okay, now can we move along now? Or anybody else want to criticize?
Wait, did you just say you wanted to get rid of Fred as deputy mayor?
I said maybe I could.
Oh, I don't think so. I don't think so. You can sit, no, you run the meeting, so.
Yeah, okay. You have anything else to say? Jesse, you want to beat on me too?
I don't need to, I think you do a good enough job of that yourself. I appreciate you, Fred, let's move on.
I will, I will mention to the rest of the council that when we grow sick and tired of this, we can, I'll be glad to make a motion to suspend the rules and we can vote on who gets to run the meeting.
Absolutely.
And the rules can be suspended and there is no debate.
Amen.
And that is the opportunity to correct the situation if we feel necessary. So you run the meetings as best you can, but if you get out of hand, just remember we can suspend the rules.
Okay, whatever that means, folks.
Well, ask the city attorney if you don't know.
Or read Robert Thule's procedure.
We'll do it.
Okay, I see I get a lot of cooperation tonight.
We're trying to get a sense of discipline.
Leadership.
Okay, number nine, zoning. Presentation, please. Excuse me, I missed, public comment, I asked for public comment. Nobody came up?
Nobody came up.
Go ahead.
Maria.
Earlier this time, if you could swear everyone in.
Yes, anyone who intends to give testimony on this item, please stand, including staff. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Good evening, council, and I'll just give a brief introduction. This is our special exception request to allow the restored use of a drive-through operation at an existing bank building with the existing drive-through already constructed. This request is required within our Benita Beach Road corridor overlay because the building has been vacant for more than six months. Staff does recommend approval of this request as conditioned in the staff report. Zoning Board recommended approval as well and the applicant does agree with the recommended conditions. I will go ahead and let the applicant present, or if you have any questions at this time, we'd be happy to answer.
I say motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment, please.
Public comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Okay, discussion of Lee County Recovery Task Force and Chris Corey, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The county staff has taken all the work that has been done by the Resiliency Task Force and by Hagerty Consulting and the Collaboratory and has produced a compendium of initiatives and they are planning to boil these down into about four different categories. What I would request is that we will, we are having another council meeting prior to the next meeting of the Resiliency Task Force. This report is available from Mike. He'll have copies. And I would appreciate if you could spend a little time going through and taking a look at the list of initiatives, not necessarily in terms of how they're grouped or anything, but if you see anything in particular that you thought was going to be in there benefiting Benita Springs or benefiting our close-by neighbors, things that we may have talked about that you see are missing, this is our chance to sort of review the inventory, make sure everything's covered in here that we want to have covered. And if there are some things that you find that we need to add or clarify, that I will get that information at the next council meeting and then be able to take it to the task force meeting, which will be the following Friday. So that's all I want to report. I don't want to get into the guts of it, but you'll see that there's a lot of initiatives that have been worked on, spelled out. I think county staff has done a wonderful job in terms of taking what was a hodgepodge of ideas and bits of paper and whiteboards and poster boards of ideas and turning them into something that we can finally work with. So please, get a copy from Mike if you don't have one and give me any thoughts or comments you have by the next meeting. That's all I wanted to say on it.
Thank you, Chris. My first reading, public hearing on capital improvements, five-year capital improvement.
This is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the 2023-2024 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program Annual Update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the capital improvement plan that you've already adopted in your fiscal year budget. It is required by state law that we adopt the, adopt the capital improvement plan by ordinance. That does not preclude the council from later on providing any budget amendments that they see fit as we move through the calendar year, but it is a requirement to, for us to move forward with the adoption of an ordinance.
Move to second reading.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Okay, number thirteen, city attorney's items, Derek?
No, I don't, I don't have anything additional, Mr. Mayor.
You said no, okay.
Feel better.
Thank you.
City managers' report items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. To, I would like, as my Hurricane Ian recovery update, reiterate what Councilmember Corey mentioned. I wanted to let you know, as a simultaneous process, the county staff, county manager, has reached out to each of the individual municipal managers for our feedback on the plan as well. So we've distributed that to our staff for technicalities, for consistency with our strategic priorities. So we'll be providing technical assistance that way as that process is moving along with the task force. So we've been included in that process.
Great.
I did want to remind everybody that we moved our November fifteenth meeting to the evening at 5:30. That will allow us for a 4:00 PM workshop on capital improvements. That will begin our annual review of each of the strategic priorities through the funding and the capital improvements plan so that we can get your feedback as we start to develop the 24-25 budget.
Yes, Chris?
One item of note, I forgot to mention about the report, the draft initiative. You will find in there that county staff has done a great job in terms of identifying potential funding sources for these initiatives that have been missing from the work undertaken by Hagerty. So there is a listing for each one of these areas of where we could possibly go to get funding and I've specifically mentioned that to Ellie because some of these things, I think we're going to want to get a jump on and maybe pursue on our own ahead of time, but at least be aware that funding sources have been identified.
You have a hurricane in our report, manager?
No, just that we're continuing to work through the, through the county on the Resiliency Task Force, the plan. We're also continuing to work on our after-action report, which we hope to have to you for adoption by the end of the calendar year as well.
Do we expect to get any more money from FEMA or?
We're continuing working with our consultant through that process, through the reimbursement process. So I don't know that we have any new updates on that, but each of the categories that we've already let you all know that we're applying for reimbursement, we're continuing to pursue all of those.
Still in financial shape, good shape, pretty good.
Correct, and I believe next council meeting we'll have a financial update and we can specifically look at where we are with the reimbursement of the FEMA funds.
Very good. Mayor and councils' report, the Halloween event was the best it ever been. I didn't know there were so many children in the area. Doctor Nigel here was handing out the candy like crazy and they thought he was a doctor, come on. He looked like a doctor.
My mother wanted me to be a doctor.
Well, thank you for staff and people to put that, all that together. It was fabulous, fabulous. And, okay, let's start here, Jamie, the item report, please.
I do. I spoke with staff, wanted to advise council that I was contacted by Representative Botana to attend a meeting along with Villages of Astero and representatives of Lee County regarding Coconut Road. I've asked staff to put in front of you the memorandum from February of 2022 of the comments that council provided and so I would like to discuss that with council prior to going.
When are you going?
Thursday.
This Thursday, so you want to discuss it?
Tomorrow. Oh, tomorrow. Yeah, that's tomorrow, wouldn't it?
Okay, so.
Jesse, go ahead.
I'm going to be completely candid with you. Like I said to the guy who's in charge of the Wonder Gardens right now, you are walking into a situation that has been one of the main sources of contention for six years now with the city of Astero. At the end of the day, they would like to have input on how we spend our dollars through the mechanism of impact fees. Unfortunately for them, impact fees are not project-specific and something that might be, you know, in their top ten priorities could be priority number sixty for us. So again, as I said before, all of the impact fees for Coconut Point Mall, for example, went to Astero. They can go to us. So how many people do you think we have in going up and down Coconut Road comparable to what they have? And they see, they got the money for the impact fees for that. Coconut Road, to me, is one of the most beautiful roads we have. I can tell you fifteen roads off the top of my head where I would rather spend impact fee dollars within our own city. These are the reasons we have a capital improvement project. Capital improvement projects are agreed to by all of us based on prioritization from traffic to aesthetics to all kinds of things. So again, we, you know, the message to them is, you know, you can put your suggestions in a suggestion box if you like, but at the end of the day, you don't have any autonomy on telling us how we should spend dollars, period. If you all want to do that in Astero, that's fine. But additionally, they come to you with these studies. They did the same thing to us last time and these are studies that they pay for that are oriented in a direction that is better for them. So then it's, oh, well, we look at these studies. You guys are impacting the road more than us. Give us millions, stop. When and if we want to address Coconut Road, we will. If you all think it's something that's pressing now, feel free and put it in your capital improvement project like responsible adults like we do and prioritize it and pay for it. But in no world do they get any say on our prioritization or our dollars specifically in a situation that is set up by the state, by the county in a way that impact fees are not specific to a certain project. That's the beginning and the end. So as far as when we should do it or how much it needs to be done, again, put it in a report, send it to us, but it's not, it's not up to Astero. And if they want something done on it, feel free. We'd appreciate it. But until then, I mean, it's the same discussion that we had back then.
Okay, Jesse, do you have anything else?
Nope.
On the, but I agree with you. Laura Carr?
I ditto Jesse's sentiments and would add that Astero's never offered to assist Benita in any of its road improvements, including behind, you know, Angler's Paradise, behind Publix, which basically assists those going north, which is Astero. And I'd like to echo Reverend, is it Lynn, right? You're in vocation? I want to echo prayers for all those in Midwest, Mideast and that antisemitism ends in America and around the world and prayers for family and friends that lost so many in mass shootings this past week. And on a lighter note, on this Sunday, there's going to be patriotic music played in the park between two and five, two, two, two and five? Two and four at Riverside and in sort of gearing up for Veterans Day and then, of course, we have Veterans Day. So, and I hope to see everybody on Sunday.
Okay, Chris, you want to add in here?
Well, I guess maybe I'll sound a little more diplomatic and I understand Jesse's concern, Laura's concern, and the mayor's concern. concern, Laura's concern, and the mayor's concern. But eventually, at the end of the day, Coconut Road will benefit people in Astero and people in, in Benita Springs, and let's not forget that part of Benita Springs is serviced by Coconut Road east of 41. So, I would say that we've got a change in leadership in Benita Springs with their new mayor and their council.
Astero.
And, I mean, Astero. And so I would just say, Jamie, just go, listen to what they have to say, see if there's some common ground that we can get to. I have a coffee cup that says "common ground," so I usually take it to meetings like that, and, and just, you know, listen to what, see what they have to say, but I wouldn't, wouldn't go necessarily to reject anything out of handless. We know eventually, at some point, Coconut Road East has got to be improved, because once the new residences go up there and so forth, there is, there is going to be more traffic. And, so let's see, let's see if we can work together.
I'd echo what Chris just said, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I trust Jamie, she's a great listener, and she's very thoughtful, and I know she'll come back and give us an idea of what's going on there. So, I'm glad you're there, Jamie, that's my bet. I've got three things for council. Laura, thanks for bringing up November eleventh, but for the public, we have a wonderful ceremony that we've had for live twenty-three out of twenty-four years at the park. Great speaker, come down from Washington DC that our newest member of the Veterans Advisory Committee obtained for, so a different person this year. A woman, highly ranked, one of the top-ranking warrant officers in the United States Army, and she's a good speaker, so I encourage you to come out. Last night was phenomenal. There had to be somewhere between our Sheriff's Department, fifteen to eighteen hundred people came out last night. Mike Gibson came in the same costume he's wearing now, so I congratulate him for that. But his staff, I think, Mike, you're the new president, how many businesses were represented last night?
About thirty-five, two, seven.
And it was going from five, about 5:15 until, I left at 8:30, and it was still going. Well done. Kudos to Zach and his staff at Ceremony Brewing, it was his idea, he was very passionate about it. I think a lot of people thought, you'll be lucky if you get ten or twelve businesses, and he proved everyone wrong. What I would like to say is, it's, that was downtown, it was great for the community, we don't need to get rid of one or the other. I think maybe in the years where it ends up being on the, on a Saturday or a Sunday, but both events, both the city event and the Downtown Business Alliance were phenomenal. I also want to thank Trish Leonard, who was the previous president, and her passion for getting that going. Laura Taylor, are you here? No, Laura's gone. Laura Taylor and the staff, phenomenal job. They coordinated things with the Alliance first year event, we should be proud. So, thank you to Laura and the staff. I attended the TEC meeting, and I'm going to tell you, there isn't a lot to be really happy about. Again, I'm very concerned about what our bid tax dollars are going to be in a year or two, so we can't be counting on that to be continuing year after year, because things are slowing down. I would like to, council's permission, how many here knew a week ago that there was an ordinance against buying or selling our city Benita Springs flag? I wanted to buy one for Rotary, and we can't do it. So, but, good reason, our former city attorney, I don't think Derek would have done this, but apparently people do bad things with flags, and the concern was that somebody would take our city flag and use it inappropriately. So there really are only, to my knowledge, three city flags in existence. I've asked staff to come up with a price so we can replace the one in city, front of City Hall, but with council's approval, I'd like to take our flag, city flag, to the Rotary event on Friday night to celebrate their forty-fifth, and I will take it and bring it back.
Yeah.
Is council okay with that?
There might be one upstairs.
There's one of.
Right there.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, that it's a policy of, of, of the, of the council that was adopted as administrative code, and what it does provide for is that the city manager can allow a flag to be flown in the city or provided to another entity that's not city-owned or operated. But as a courtesy, it would always be brought to the council to discuss that.
So was it not correct that we, this flag can't be purchased by an individual?
Well, under our, under ours, we do not purchase flags under, for an individual. The city has, has its logo and brand with a flag company. If someone replicated it and bought their own flag somehow, then that we can't control. But our, our purchasing of our own flag through our vendor, we don't allow others to, to just buy the flag.
Since we're on the topic of it, I actually was, I, I was recently asked if I could procure two of those for the congressional offices, one in Washington DC and one in Cape Coral, and I said I'm sure that we can, but I didn't know that, I was just gonna.
So that would be government, intergovernmental, so Lee County are, you know, is it perfectly appropriate, the congressional offices are perfectly appropriate. It's when it would be flown at another entity, possibly a commercial entity or others, that should be given the purview of council to kind of consider that for your.
City manager, we spoke today about this flag that's out front here.
Yes.
City flag, we need to be cleaned before we put it out in public again. It's really filthy. Maybe we have a, a clean one somewhere that we could lend out.
I was going to borrow that one, if possible, with the stand.
There you go.
Or the one in the other room. We, we are already procuring a new one. We do, our maintenance staff does regularly, it does take a little bit to get them in, but we do regularly review those and procure it. I did find out they've already procured a new one for the front. We do the same at all the Parks and Rec facilities, too.
Okay, very good. Yes, Fred?
Yeah, I've got two things. I want to give Jamie one, an additional thought. We are diminishing rapidly on how much impact fees we get. Back a couple of years ago, we were rolling in money every year. Now we're not, and we're using it up, and so we don't have a lot of money to give out. Secondly, when we were not that far away from spending one heck of a lot of money, forty-some million dollars, to fix Benita Beach Road and 41, which is the third worst intersection on Old 41 in Lee County. If we had, if we took all the impact money we had, we'd just make a bare dent in that forty-some million, I think, after the other things we were using it for, I think. So I, so we don't have the money that we used to have, which would make solving the problem of Coconut Road much easier. So I think that needs to be considered. And actually, Astero benefits once that intersection, everybody that uses 41, north or south, will be going through that intersection three times quicker than you do now, which is a big, big gain, you know? Probably ten years after that, the growth will screw it up, and we'll be back to where we are. But we're, but we'd be in a worser mess if we didn't do it. The other thing I want to mention is, on Sunday, they're going to, the, there's going to be a big Veterans Breakfast. It is, I'll get you the details, and we'll get it out to all council. It's, I think it's fifty bucks, but it's for veterans, but it's sponsored by Senator Rick Scott, he will be there, so.
Where?
It's at the, it's what the old nightclub used to be at the, the south-east corner of Imperial Parkway.
Up the Benita Center?
Yeah, Benita Center, yeah, that's where it's supposed to be. It's going to be a real big breakfast and all that. Most, a lot of veterans will be there.
One question, we do not own any of Coconut Road, is that true?
That's right.
That's correct.
We can't really spend taxpayers' money on somebody else's road? Theoretically.
So I would allow the attorney to, to provide information on that. I would suggest that if you wanted to enter an inter-local agreement, that's up council's decision. But it has to be analyzed. As far as impact fees, it has to be reviewed as that you are creating additional capacity. That's the only way to use impact fees.
Okay, thank you. Have any else?
Before we adjourn, I just, at the workshop for the Wonder Gardens, it was, it is suggested that we possibly have a council member assist, you know, in those one-on-one meetings with their chair and, and their staff. So if, if you all would like to let us know who you'd like us to be coordinating with, and then that person can continue to give updates to council along the way.
I'd like to do that.
I'd like Jesse.
I'd like to do that.
A second, Jesse. There's been a second for Jesse?
Yeah. So we, we have a motion?
Yeah.
I think so.
I made a motion, Jesse, well, Mayor made a motion, wasn't second, I made a second motion, Jesse seconded, I mean, I'm sorry, Jamie seconded, sitting close to Amy. And so the motion is for Jesse to represent us at the Wonder Gardens.
Mr. Mayor? Roll call?
Okay. Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Yes.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Anything else?
Public comment?
We're adjourned.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment, yeah. Yeah, you gotta wait all night, now you got something.
Good afternoon again, Trish Leonard, for the record, a business owner and resident of downtown Benita. I want to echo the last night, awesome, so many kids, I didn't know they lived down here either. And also to Laura, for the city, it was just awesome. So, we've got a lot, and I think together, we're going to be better and just grow. I mean, I think that's the only thing we could say, is to continue to grow. And Jesse, great points, excuse me, councilman, great points for today, and thank you so much, because you really did bring some clarity. So I appreciate that during our, the workshop. And finally, we have a business owner opening tomorrow. I did send the council an invitation from four to six, and Benita Blooms, Barbie's been here twenty-five years, but she's sick, so she has a new owner, but we're doing a grand opening, and you're welcome to be part of the, the ribbing cutting, which will take place at 5:30, right across the street in the Sunshine Plaza. So if anybody's available, it's from four to six, it'd be nice. And I know Councilman Folic is going to be there, and Councilwoman Carr, but if there's anyone else that would like to attend, I just want to make sure we don't, not acknowledge you, so just let me know. And that's tomorrow at Benita Blooms in the Sunshine Plaza. And thank you, great job.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add one thing? And you know what else, Trish, about last night? The, the amount of families, units, I mean, and the presence of dads and moms is beautiful, yeah.
Anything else? We're adjourned.